...two thousand sixteen. I'm going to ask Chief Matt Doring to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Bill Brunson to lead us in the pledge. Please join us.
We ask you to come to us tonight, bless us with your grace, to give us this commission, this community, that all the decisions that we make in our daily lives, whether it be for ourselves or for others, to always be mindful that it serves not only to benefit of oneself, but also that of others, and that we all do what we do for your will. Amen.
Amen. Ben, join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before each meeting, we have a public comment period. Tonight, we're fortunate enough to have three speakers that have signed up to speak, and each one of the speakers has five minutes, which to give their voice, their opinion, or statement, or whatever, to the Board of Commissioners. So the first person up is James Mowat. Mr. Mowat, if you'll come up to the podium, sir, and say your name, and whatever, and then you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you, sir. If it pleases the Board, my name is James Mowat. I've been a resident of St. Simon's Island for the last fifteen years or so. Tonight, I come before you with several members of the community.
Would several of you stand who are here, present?
Thank you. We are along with two thousand others, request a resolution of opposition to seismic testing and offshore drilling to be passed by the Board. This evening, I'll be representing two separate entities with parallel interests and missions. The first is St. Simon's Island residents opposing seismic testing. This was initiated as a grassroots initiative opposing seismic blasting and offshore drilling of the Georgia coast. A petition was generated, and as of the date, has in excess of two thousand signatures. The petition began with the sole emphasis on the environmental ecosystem and marine life. However, offshore drilling threatens Glen County's coastal economy as well. Just one catastrophic spill, as we've seen in the Gulf of Mexico, California, other places throughout the world, a pipeline rupture, or a incident involving transportation of oil, whether it be by pipeline, or by tanker, would absolutely devastate Glen County's economy, as well as St. Simon's. There wouldn't be a St. Simon's Island. The second individuals I represent is a group called the Georgia Chapter of Surf Rider Foundation. Surf Rider Foundation is a nationwide organization with over fifty thousand members. Georgia has about nine hundred. As a member, they've asked me to present their opposition and further request a resolution opposing seismic testing and offshore drilling be passed by the Board. For the record, at this time, I'd like to present the petition that you have before you at this time, to the Board, along with a copy of the two thousand-plus signatories and fifty comments opposing seismic testing and offshore drilling. I believe all that's been given to the county clerk. Given tonight's time restrictions, I'd like to take this opportunity to paraphrase the key elements of the petition that is before you. We are requesting the Glen County Board of Commissioners to adopt a resolution opposing seismic testing off St. Simon's Island, Sea Island, in the entirety of Glen County. This petition is respectively submitted by the concerned citizens of St. Simon's Island, Sea Island, several business owners that are present here today, and many tourists and vacationers from around the world who enjoy our pristine beaches, marshes, and in particular, the abundant marine life, wildlife, waterfowl, the grace of the Atlantic coastline. St. Simon's Island is well-known for both its inshore and offshore fishing, birdwatching, dolphing, and the rare North Atlantic right whale. I've had trouble with that all day long, North Atlantic right whale sightings, as well as the southern charm associated with the island's lifestyle. As you're well aware, the forthcoming offshore oil and gas drilling that's proposed by the United States Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, we'll call them BOEM from now on, requires suitable locations for exploration. So what they do is they take a few ships out, they throw arrays of seismic blasting tools, and they blast through miles of both ocean and substrate into the ocean floor. The current technology is just that, and that's the only technology available right now, is seismic blasting. They do this over a period of several months, and for very long durations. Each blast goes off about every ten seconds. I've heard numerous comments regarding the blasting aspect of it. It's loud, because it penetrates the ocean and the ocean floor for several thousand feet. It is well-established that seismic blasting can cause a range of impacts on marine mammals, fish, and other marine life, including broad habitat displacement, disruption of vital behaviors essential to foraging and breeding, loss of biological diversity in some circumstances, injuries, and mortalities.
One minute. No, I was just saying you have one minute to finish up.
My goodness. We have significant concerns that the actions proposed by the Bureau of BOEM Geological and Geophysical Activities on the Atlantic Atlantic Shelf would cause significant environmental harm to marine life and the ocean ecosystem. According to BOEM, seismic blasting for oil and gas in the Atlantic will kill or injure one hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred marine species, to include dolphin, whales, including the official mammal of Georgia, the right whale. In addition to potential behavior disruption, experts anticipate impacts to nesting routines of sea turtles, as well as temporary hearing loss, and physical effects of pelagic fishes. We honestly believe that such impacts to our local marine resources are not acceptable price to pay for the assessment of potential oil. Industries such as tourism, recreation, and commercial fishing are fundamentally dependent on a healthy ocean system, and generate significant economic revenue for the county and the city, or St. Simon's Island.
Mr. James, your time is up, sir.
Time's up.
Yes, sir. Make it quick, please, sir.
All right, making it quick. Through this petition requesting to Glen County join the more than one hundred East Coast communities who have taken affirmative action to oppose seismic surveys and offshore drilling, we urge you, Glen County Board of Commissioners, to adopt a resolution expressing the values of our community and lifestyle, and oppose offshore practices that threaten our quality of life. Other Georgia communities that have voiced opposition include drilling, to offshore drilling and seismic blasting include the City of Savannah, Tybee Island, St. Mary's, Kingsland, and the City of Brunswick. In closing, I ask the Board to consider one thing, and then I'm done, sir, I promise. In nineteen seventy-eight through nineteen eighty, seismic blasting in oil rigs, this activity was done. Seismic blasting took place, they identified six locations, they thought they had oil reserves. They actually tested, through test wells, these six locations, from southeast Georgia down to north Florida. None produced one scented hydrocarbon, no oil. They were all dry.
All right, sir. That's it. I have to...
All right, well, thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it. Myself and two thousand others appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Smith? Monica Smith? You're up, ma'am. You have, once again, you have five minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Monica Smith, and I live on St. Simon's Island. Members of the Glen County Commission, now that you have wet your feet initiating a rezoning for Plum Brook Lane, let me suggest that you turn your attention to a number of county-owned parcels that are also improperly zoned. For your convenience, I've included the numbers of the parcels on your handout. One, the thirty acres on East Beach that were zoned for R six residential need to be rezoned to conservation, preservation, to properly protect the newly accreted dunes. Second, the six point four acres adjacent to Dunbar Creek Sewage Plant need to be rezoned from RR Resort Residential to conservation, preservation, and then the parcel needs to be deeded back to the Joint Water and Sewer Commission, whose facilities are already on that parcel. Number three, the eighteen hundred and eighty-six acres encompassing the Golden Isles Airport and adjacent lands need to be evaluated as to the appropriateness of the governmental and general industrial zoning you have placed there. Also, the master plan for the airport needs to be updated to ensure the adequacy of space for future expansion, as well as to reconsider whether the exclusion of the public from access to the historic Brunswick Alto Maha Canal is appropriate. The current proposal by the Glen County Airport Commission to clear-cut a hundred acres of public lands in the GI Zone north of the airport is, in my opinion, inappropriate. Fourth, the planned development zoning for the seventy-acre tract that the Brunswick and Glen County Development Authority is currently trying to market for truck parking and warehouses needs to be resinded, since when that was planned in two thousand and three, it has not been developed. Moreover, no development permits, land disturbance, utility, stormwater management, or construction should be issued until a tree and wetland survey has been submitted and preservation strategies have been approved. We do not want to see a repetition of the debacle at the solar Glen site on Harriet Digger's Boulevard. And by the way, PDG is not a category that is listed in my version of the Glen County zoning ordinance. Five, FA Forest Agriculture hardly seems the appropriate category for a highway welcome station on over twenty-four acres of land. If Glen County is going to be serious about regulating land use and planning, it should be correct in what it zones its own lands. Six, now that almost four thousand acres from the old Altama Plantation have been acquired by the State of Georgia as a wildlife management district, the old plat obviously needs to be vacated, and whatever plans anyone has for the remaining acreage will need to be submitted for community review. The wildlife management area is obviously more properly zoned for conservation and preservation. It would be both right and proper for the county commissioner to initiate that change on behalf of the State of Georgia, which acquired the lands for our benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Mr. Chairman, you have questions? Can I? I know we're in the public session here, but...
Don't, but if you want to.
Well, it's come to my attention, I need, are the comments in this session, are they part of our minutes? Okay. Yes, sir.
Speaker number three, Mr. Jeff Kilgore.
Good evening. I'm speaking tonight regarding the county ethics ordinance, and specifically, as it applies to the Island Planning Board. I know that most of you probably have this committed to memory, but some folks don't know it, and it's just a couple of sentences. County officials and employees are expected to discharge their duties impartially and to conduct their affairs and duties so as to foster public confidence in the integrity of county government. To achieve these purposes, it is essential that county officials and employees observe the ethical standards of the county. Now, nobody can get in the head of another person and know what their thought process is with regard to conflict, but there is an individual that serves on the Island Planning Board who's benefited from a number of county contracts for architectural work. And indeed, that person is the architect of record for the current hotel that's being built on the airport property. Now, I understand that the developer of the hotel is a private entity, and it's not the county, and so technically, the architect's not employed by the county. This past Tuesday, the Island Planning Board considered a rezoning application for properties surrounding McKinnon Airport. Part of the request was for the construction of an additional hotel, restaurants, meeting facilities, and other things that you can only imagine, depending on what the developer would want to do. So clearly, an architect would be presumably motivated to want that development to go forward. Now, I don't know how the person ever got appointed to the planning board in the first place, because it's clear that developers coming before the Island Planning Board, presumably he'd want to have a relationship with those developers, and he would not want to poison that relationship by voting against zoning matters that would include development. And the charge of the Island Planning Board by ordinance that created it is to be cognizant of the density and preserving the integrity of their neighborhoods. Under ordinance section two dash two dash fifty, the Board of Commissioners is to determine whether, in fact, there's real conflict. Now, that section requires that a county employee bring that matter to your attention. I'm not a county employee, but I'm a citizen. And the requirement for determination of conflict of interest for the Board of Commissioners determines in writing whether the official or the employee, in this case, a member of the planning board, involved in the proposed transaction, or his participation in the proposed official action is adverse to the interests of the county, and thus a conflict of interest. The official or employee's financial interest is not adverse to the interests of the county, and thus not prohibited, or the ethical conflict is insubstantial or remote. I would ask that you, on your own initiative, inquire and look into whether there's a conflict with a person who has a vested interest in development, sitting on the Island Planning Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. All right. Commissioner Browning? Go ahead.
Chairman? While I find my papers. Under public hearing, land use, item two.
No, not that one. Add item to the consent.
Oh, excuse me. Under commission presentations and announcements, please, I would like to add to the agenda item six point one, nine detention officers at cost of one hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars to the agenda, and also item six point two, revised Georgia Tech agreement for St. Simon's Island Corporation study.
Chairman, we need to do them one at a time, don't we? I mean, Mr. Turney, we need to do them one at a time, don't we?
I think you can do it one time, just a...
Okay. We have a motion to add item six point one to the consent agenda to approve the addition of nine detention officers.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, signal a vibration in your right hand. That's unanimous. Have a motion to, or need a motion to add item six point two to the consent agenda to approve the amended cost reimbursement specialized services agreement with Georgia Tech.
Thank you.
Motion and second. All those in favor, signal a vibration in your right hand. Thank you, Commissioners. All right. Item number one, public hearings will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position, and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Item number one, consider the issuance of a two thousand and sixteen alcohol beverage license for Island Jerk Shack, fifty-seven nineteen Altama Avenue, Brunswick, Georgia. The license is to sell distilled spirits, malt beverages, and wine for consumption on premises. Sunday sales permitted. Lenora Williams licensee. Chief Doring.
Ms. Williams, that's okay. If it pleases the Commission, Ms. Williams is present in the audience, which is required, and she meets the requirements for your consideration for issuance of the license. All you have to do is be present. You don't have to say anything.
Thank you, Chief. This is a public hearing. Anyone other than the applicant wish to step forward and speak in favor of the application? Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone wish to come forward and speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Move to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal a vibration in your right hand. That's unanimous. Thank you, Commissioners. Public hearing, land use, same thing applies, be limited to thirty minutes each opposing side, five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position, and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Item number two, ZM three-one-two-six, the Lucas Building, is recommended this item be remanded back to the Island Planning Commission to conduct another public hearing. The Board of Commissioners is not taking a position either way on the recommendations made by the Island Planning Commission, but rather, it has been recommended that it be remanded as a result of potential deficiencies in the notice of the public hearing that has come to our attention. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion due to potential deficiencies regarding notice of the public hearing conducted on January nineteen, two thousand and sixteen. I move to remand ZM three-one-two-six to the Island's Planning Commission with instructions to conduct another public hearing at its meeting on March fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, and to return a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for consideration at its meeting on March seventeen, two thousand and sixteen.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal a vibration in your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Commissioners. Item number three, ZM thirty-one fifty-three, Plum Brook Road. Consider request to rezone seven parcels at twenty-three twelve and twenty-three fourteen, Demery Road, one-one-five, one-one-seven, one-one-twenty-eight, one-four-two, Plum Brook Road, and all additional undisclosed addresses on Plum Brook Road from Medium Residential to R nine, one-family residential. Partial IDs zero-four dash zero-two, two-six-zero, zero-four, zero-two, three-one-two, zero-four, zero-two, three-one-three, zero-four, zero-two, three-one-four, zero-four, one-four, four-eight-nine, zero-four, one-four, four-eight-eight, and zero-four, zero-two, two-five-eight. William Duncan, Orin Douglas, Mary Higgins, Robert Neal, Mary Wilson, Kloster, and Cecilia Buchanan owners. Mr. Hanley.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, before you see the location for the proposed rezoning request, this is one of the recommended actions that we would come out of the moratorium, that certain areas that have high-density uses be downzoned as appropriate, when there's sufficient basis for those. The basis for this one is the lack of sufficient access to provide for the density that could be allowed on that road. This is Demery right here, the traffic circle is here. This is the Waffle House, and this is the area for that, the statement in there about unnamed parcel addresses and everything, is because this side here, even though it only has a couple blocks on it, is entirely subdivided and recorded right now into lots, but they are lumped together for tax purposes. So that's why there's undisclosed addresses along that side. This is the quote "street" that goes down into that area. It has not been maintained, it's not recognized by the county, other than via the plat recordation. There's been no maintenance to it, and there's been no development of the road. The stop sign is a late placement by county staff for liability purposes, it's not been there for an extensive amount of time. This is looking out on the Demery, obviously be before the current situation with the traffic in there. It is a proposal to consider to rezone the properties of budding Plum Brook Road from MR to R nine, single family. Currently, that would allow for two-family dwellings, cluster dwellings, multifamily dwellings, row houses, and timeshares and everything as permitted uses in the MR district. MR allows sixteen units per acre. R nine, obviously, is around four. So this is a radical reduction in the recommended density for that area. There are seven parcels on this area that's based upon tax purposes. There are twenty-three lots of record in there. It is designated as a minor street. These streets, by ordinance, are supposed to have about two-hundred-and-fifty ADTs, based upon the ITE standards, that would be like twenty-five houses. Current existing lots would yield two-hundred-and-ten, and then the other potential lots on there would yield an additional two-hundred-and-seventy, which is way beyond where we would recommend it. The Island Planning Commission recommends unanimously that the change be undertaken, and these are your possible actions to approve the zoning change, or deny the zoning change, or to defer the application, or as you previously have done, to remand it back to the Island Planning Commission. And these are your possible motions. We would recommend that the Board approve the rezonings. This is a furtherance, as I said, of the moratorium actions and recommendations that we had in there. I have any questions, I will answer those.
Hanley, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hanley? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this application? Please do so. Please state your name, ma'am.
My name is Melinda Brule White, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Duncan, and I just wanted to reinforce everything Mr. Hanley said, and point out that his plan is to actually reduce the density and improve the quality of the area and the potential construction there, and that's what we hope more folks are willing to do with these highly dense properties on the island. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this application? Hearing none, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Julian Smith, I live on St. Simon's Island. I certainly approve of what is proposed tonight. This is long overdue. Before the meeting, I told the Chair I would not speak tonight on any issue if he allowed the public hearing on the Lucas Building to go forward. I think the county commission has once again made the mistake of scheduling and announcing and noticing a public hearing, and you noticed after you all voted not to hold the public hearing on that matter, about a dozen people left, and there are other people who are sitting here in this room who came to speak or to hear the public hearing on the Lucas matter. I wish you would stick with your agendas, even if it is not convenient for you to hear from the public.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith. Excuse me. Do you have anything, either in support or against this application? If not, sir, you're out of order, and I'd ask that you be...
I know I'm out of order, but at the start of my comments, I spoke in favor of this application for Plum Brook Rain.
Then get to it.
Maybe you didn't hear me, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak in favor of it? Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the rezoning application, ZM thirty-one fifty-three, change the zoning of the subject properties from MR to R nine.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I would like to, I'd like to recognize Mr. Duncan, if he's in the audience, if you would stand up, sir. We do a lot in this community to kind of bash development from time to time. Mr. Duncan has voluntarily downzoned that property from what it could be. It's the kind of development that I certainly would like to continue to see on St. Simon's, where we have high-density areas, and I applaud your efforts before we vote on this. I appreciate what you're doing, sir.
Anything else, Commissioners?
Same thing Dale said, thank you. It's refreshing. It really is nice to see somebody not trying to jam. How many houses did you say per acre, sixteen?
Sixteen units per acre.
Yeah.
Under current zoning.
I'd like to see somebody wants a nice development, rather than a mess. Thank you.
Any other comments, Commissioners? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal a vibration in your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Browning?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull item twenty-nine from consent agenda.
Okay, I need a motion first to approve...
Oh, oh, excuse me. Well...
I need a motion to approve all items on consent agenda and finance.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve all items on consent agenda, finance, general business.
And that includes items six-point-one and six-point-two?
Right.
Yeah, well, we'll get to that in just a minute. Is there any? All right, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any item that wishes to be pulled?
Mr. Chairman, I did get ahead of myself. I'd like to pull item twenty-nine from consent.
Item twenty-nine is pulled. All in favor, all items on general business and finance with the exception of item twenty-nine, signal fiber, raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item twenty-nine is pulled, and it for discussion, and it is pulled because, where's my notes? Give me a second. Okay, this, the contract has not been finalized. The county's attorney's office is working with AT&T on a few needed amendments. Can we just pass this, Mr. County Attorney, under the new motion, subject to county's attorney's review? All right, need a motion to approve it, as stated there.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, the new motion for item twenty-nine, to authorize staff to install under contract two T-one communication circuits between Brunswick and Savannah at a cost of two-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty dollars and fifty cents per month, with funding to be provided by the fiscal year sixteen JPSCD operating budget, subject to county attorney review of the contract.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal fiber, raise your right hand. Thank you, commissioners. That's unanimous. Did we get that right, Mr. County Attorney? Thank you, sir. All right, general business, thirty-six. Consider authorizing change order number two to East Coast Asphalt LLC Contract for the Canal Road Improvements Project with funding provided by Joint Water Sewer Commission and authorize a budget increase in revenues and expenditures. Mr. Hanley?
Mr. Chairman, staff requests this one be deferred. The contractors not yet provided us with a price and did not have it in time for JWC Board to meet on it today, so...
All right.
Mr. Hanley, how long do you want this deferred to?
Hopefully, two weeks, to the first meeting in March.
Next board meeting?
Next board meeting in March, yes.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to defer this to the next board meeting.
Second. What's that date, Cindy?
Third.
March third?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion's to defer it to the March third Board of Commissioners meeting. You made the motion. You made it second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal fiber, raise your right hand. Thank you, commissioners. Thirty-seven. Consider awarding the bid for the Americans with Disability Act compliance modifications to the Coast Guard Beach House to the lowest responsive and reasonable bidder United Grounds Maintenance Service incorporated a cost of one-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars with funding to be provided by the FY sixteen ADA Capital Projects Fund budget in the amount of forty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars, and general fund fund balance in the amount of sixty-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. Mr. Austin, sir?
Good evening, commissioners. This is a schedule update from the Finance Committee. We brought this up to the Finance Committee. We had a, the basic ninety-day window, if you will, construction schedule, and we understand the sensitivity of doing work at the Coast Guard Bath House, even upgrading it for ADA compliance during the summer season. But I just wanted to let you, give you an update, as, because we had a meeting with the contractor, contractor that has done business with us before, and give you a quick little scope of what's going to be done, and a schedule. And so, basically, we're spending money to upgrade and bring this Coast Guard Bath House facility on Coast Guard Beach up to ADA standards. It consists of removing the existing two shower heads, shower facilities here, and putting four outdoor showers, putting this handicap parking pad here, this handicap parking here, this sidewalk that joins, everything's connected with a sidewalk that joins it out to the boardwalk, and then there's some partition placement inside. We sat down with the contractor. The contractor submitted me a schedule, or us a schedule. We had a pre-construction kind of conference with the ADA coordinator and the A and E, the design firm, and Joe Combs is here to represent them tonight. But basically, he believes that if he gets started, he can get finished by the first of April. This kind of shows you what he's going to be doing. He's going to do in March, the first part of March, he's going to take care of the plumbing and the concrete, a piece of it, and then, and then the, there's some work in fencing, and the restrooms will be the last part of it. That's kind of a long pole in the tent, as you have to order the partitions. Talked with the contractor on a few occasions. They are ready to go to bonding and ready to order the materials that they need. Our recommendation would be that we press forward with this and get it knocked out before the first of April. However, the contractor is willing to honor this price and do this work at, when school starts in August, if that's what the board would want.
And we're, we can go out for bid for this tomorrow. I mean, we can go ahead and proceed with the bid as early as tomorrow, but the contractor...
Finance will probably cut the notice, or work the award tomorrow. They usually do, as soon as you guys approve it.
All right, commissioners, any questions for Mr. Austin?
Mr. Austin, do you know how much the labor in the contract is worth, the labor portion?
Not off the top of my head, no, sir.
Well, do you have any idea how much the material portion is worth?
I'm going to ask Joe to come up.
Commissioners, typically, we don't ask...
Say your name, please, sir.
Joe Combs, with Ursula Rural Architects. Typically, we don't get a detailed cost breakdown on the schedule values until after the contract has been awarded. Contractor will have all that in his, in his work, but we typically don't ask for that until he knows when he's beginning.
But I was just, reason I'm curious, if he's, if he's saying he can be done in roughly four weeks?
Six weeks.
Huh? Six, six weeks?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I just, I just want to see how much money he had in labor, see how, see how much he had to spend each week, because, you know, six weeks is...
The majority of this project is what's called flat work or concrete work, so the material costs would be on an as-needed basis. He wouldn't have any, any, any items to really order ahead of time. The only items he would need to get ordered early would be items like the new shower heads that are being installed and the bathroom partitions. Bathroom partitions, that's part of the reason that portion of the work is pushed towards the end of the job, to allow that, that material to be ordered, come in, and then be able to be installed. As far as the labor's concerned, we didn't feel like this was a ninety-day project from the beginning. We felt like it was about a thirty or forty-five day project, and so with contractor coming in saying that it's a five-to-six-week project, he's right in line with what we thought it really should have been based on the work that was being asked of him.
Dale? And I think that was part of the issue with the Finance Committee, was the starting timeframe. The contractor was saying he thinks he can, and we didn't want this thing running into May or June, right in the middle of the tourist season, cranked up, and then he said we'd wait till August. That's why I think it was brought before the full board, so we got a feel for this, to see if that's really what we think is going to happen.
Yeah, I would, I would have a discussion, you know, about running over. I mean, if he thinks he can do it, if he can convince y'all he can do it, because the last thing we want to do is come up and, you know, right there, right there at the end, and say, well, we need another week or ten days or something. You know, the public, if we tell the public we're going to be done, you know, we need to stick to it, and that's what I'm getting at. You know, if y'all can, y'all can get comfortable with it and have confidence that he can be done, I'm all for it, but we can be breathing down your neck.
Problems on... Chairman, you know, gentlemen, as JR Commissioner Stanbaugh alluded to, we have some pains with this thing being done in March. March is not a slow time. All the weekends in March last year, we were full. There is spring break for colleges that's in March, and we are a popular destination. One of the reasons why we asked for this schedule to come forward, so we could better see how long it would take, I guess I need to come back to Mr. Combs. I mean, how much of this, can this be directed to Monday to Thursday? Or are we talking, working through the weekends?
Well, no, this, this schedule, based on what the contractor told us, was he's going to have the job shut down Friday at noon. Everything's safe, so that the park and the facility be open to the public Friday afternoon, all weekend, and then Monday morning, he would come back in and begin picking up and do another four-and-a-half days' work. His work schedule will probably be a little bit longer than your typical eight-hour day. You may get in there, you know, when the park opens in the morning and stay, you know, until closer to dark, depending on what, what he's got going on at that particular point in time.
Look at my finance commissioners, you know, we went through this. Obviously, the last thing we want is on these busy weekends in March, is having a mess sitting out there. And you said we could do this in August after school goes back without any problems?
But the problem with that is, if it goes back in August, you're still dealing with the Labor Day weekend, plus then you're dealing potentially with Florida, Georgia weekend. So, I mean, I'm not sure...
There's a, there's a long timeframe between the second week and August.
No, but it's, I'm just saying, you know...
If we're worried about Georgia, Florida starting in August, then we really need to be worried about April and May starting in March.
Well...
I mean, in April and May are a lot busier than the Georgia, Florida weekend. That one weekend's busy, but...
But he stated, the contractor said that he will have, he will shut down on Friday at noon and have everything cleaned up and safe and everything, so that it can be used.
Additionally, they went on a site visit. Joe went on a site visit with the ADA coordinator, David Strickland, and they located laydown areas for the job site trailers that we had talked about back in this area, that'll be away from the public and be hard to see that they're out, even out there. So, that was something that was all...
Mr. Austin, that's a good map to look at. So, the most intrusive part of this, of this whole job site, is where the showers and all are. Can those be done in the early weeks of March, when we may have less, or has, and from your thing, I'm not sure...
The plumbing rough end right here, this is the part of the showers that's scheduled for the second week of March, and the concrete installation you'll see right here is the eleventh and the eighteenth, these two weeks here. So, then the plumbing finish, it looks like they'll be finished. It'll take them two weeks to knock that out.
So, what are we doing for plumbing in the meantime, while they're doing all that?
The interior plumbing's not being affected. This is only, there's exterior showers. Those will be gone during, during the month of, or the first couple of weeks in March, while they're being replaced.
Dale, when is spring break?
Well, for the, for the high school, the local high school, it's the first week in April. And it looks like you're kind of bumping into the first week of April a little bit. But the colleges are in March. College spring breaks in March.
They're in the March.
High schools are in April. From my perspective, I just seem to see it bump back to the fall.
At that point, you're looking at Labor Day weekend, might be the Memorial Day weekend. But now, you're looking at disrupting a lot more. I mean, that's, I mean, that was the thinking, what we were discussing, was the fall was going to be a little less of an impact than the spring will be.
Commissioners?
Are the showers out there now?
Yes.
And so, they're going to be out of service?
They'll, they'll be out of service for about two, two-and-a-half weeks, it looks like.
And if he starts tomorrow, could, could it be asked that, like Commissioner Provinzono said, the showers be done first? Does that be the first thing that could be?
Looking at his schedule, and some that might be driven by, he's got to order the replacement, the new showers that are going to be installed, that, that may be dictating when he's able to do that work. We could certainly go back and inquire as to whether, whether the shower work can be stepped up. But in order to do the showers, we're, the little plaza paver area, which is not, not ADA compliant, has to be totally demoed. New showers, new plumbing put in, and then new concrete work put back. So, that whole process, you're still looking at, you know, it's going to be the same two, two, two-and-a-half weeks of downtime.
I just think that since it's ADA work, and it's on the very front end of when we're getting into the season, and it'd probably be nice to have those new showers out there for all of the summer. You know, maybe either that, or, you know, the work is not going to impact on anything else hardly going on around the Coast Guard Station.
No.
And, and, and for that matter, you know, schedule, I mean, it's doable. Okay, it's doable. And I'm just thinking it'd be nice to have this brand-new ADA shower facility there for, for anybody that may be looking for ADA shower facilities, and they have them all summer available to them, rather than putting it off, because if we put it off to August, it'll be next, or the fall is going to be next summer, before anybody can realistically use them.
Any further discussion?
I mean, I don't, I think the big hang-up is going to be, if you start bumping into the end of March with that, with that big piece, that's the one that's going to be...
The end of March, they'll be, they'll be in the bathrooms. They'll be installing toilet partitions and, and the cleanup piece of it, you see down here at the end of the schedule. ADA signage.
So, as far as all the concrete work, we should be done with that by the...
By the, I think by the eighteenth, as they appear, previous. Looks like they're finished. Twenty-fifth, plumbing's finished. That's the exterior plumbing. So, the last concrete installation should be done the week of the eighteenth.
Okay.
The partitions, we talked that over. It's going to probably take them two days, a bathroom. The males, one, two days, and the females, next two days, and he'll have porta-potties out there to cover the transition.
I think Mike makes a good point. I mean, get in there, get through with it, have the things for summer. You're going to have more people taking showers in August than you have March, and I just think that...
Unless you're willing, unless we're willing to wait until next November... Unless you're willing, unless you're willing to wait until next November, there's not a good time not to impact people on to use this.
No, no. We, we're not closing the road, are we?
No, sir.
Nobody's going to call it out.
As far as we're not closing the road, I think.
Somebody willing, somebody willing to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we move forward with the.
Second.
Project for March.
All those in favor awarding the bid for the Disabilities Compliance, the Coast Guard Bath House, signal vibration, raise your right hand. One, two, three, five, all those against to move forward. I think as Commissioner Browning said, we're going to be checking on this thing, David, so please make sure it moves forward as expeditiously as it can. Item number thirty-eight, consider awarding the contract for twenty-sixteen Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, resurfacing and restriping of Glen County Roads to Seaboard Construction Company in Brunswick, Georgia, the lowest responsive and reasonable bidder in the amount of one million, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, ninety-nine dollars and eighty-one cents, with funding from the FY sixteen Capital Projects Fund Balance in the amount of nine hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents and two hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars from the general fund fund balance. Mr. Austin?
Uh, this bid was received after the finance meeting, and we wanted to get, get it up for approval. You know, we, last year's L-MIG, I think we approved in May. And then because the, the contractor that was, that got the award was so busy, we didn't, we didn't get to actually doing any work out in the right of way until October. And so there's a lull in the action. The contractor is hungry, we got a good bid, we have a list of roads, and we would like to award, or recommend you award these, this contractor the bid so that he can get started resurfacing some roads.
Commissioners, I, I take responsibility of, Mr. Austin came for, to me for the, what he mentioned is about going ahead and getting this contract moving forward for this resurfacing and restriping, and he asked me about thirty-seven, excuse me, thirty-eight and thirty-nine, just going to, straight to the commission with it. So I told him I think that would be the thing to do. And you will send the Commissioners a list of the roads that are going to be resurfaced and restriped?
Correct, I think Cindy's done that.
Oh, we have them, okay.
Cindy's done that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I have a list, I have a list, I have two slides that show the list. This is the first part of the list, and then I have a second part of the list right there.
Where's the resurfacing?
That, that is, those are, those are the ones for resurfacing.
I'm, I'm sorry.
It's a total of ten, ten point eight miles. We're doing, we have, some of those roads are being restriped, and then we have a separate contract for restriping that we're working.
All right. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Austin? Motion?
Yeah, there's no, we have no other place to get the additional funding except the fund fund balance? Two hundred and forty-five, nine fifty-one? We have no other money in your budget for that? For resurfacing roads?
Uh, no, sir.
Not in his budget.
Not my budget.
I think it's funny.
Not in my budget, no, sir.
Not in his budget. Any other questions for Mr. Austin? Commissioners, a motion?
Yes, Chairman, I make a motion to move forward with item thirty-eight, with the L-MIG resurfacing and restriping.
Have a motion? And a second. All those in favor, signal vibration, raise your right hand? All those opposed? Six to one. Item thirty-nine, consider awarding the, the bid for the tide gate replacement for King Creek at King's Lane to the lowest responsive and reasonable bidder, Dogwood Construction Group Incorporated, a cost of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars with funding to be provided by the FY sixteen, excuse me, fifteen, sixteen Capital Projects Fund Balance. Mr. Austin?
This is another bid that was opened a couple of days after the finance meeting. These are for new tide gates, duck billed tide gates. This is at the end of the King's Way drainage. You may remember last year, we helped, we, the Public Works Department dug out the ditch through the golf course. We're in the process of, of trying to fix that drainage system. This is the gates at the end, obviously keep the, the tide waters from backing up to the system. Those gates no longer work. This is for the replacement of those gates. We had three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget for this and the, the award of the contract up there to fix the area in the Ashantilly Drainage System, which is going out to bid here shortly. So I'll be back to you to talk to you about the, the cost there. We're also in the process of talking to the airfield about cleaning the little ditch right there between the Ashantilly area and, and the golf course. So our attempt is to get that whole drainage area squared away and cleaned up.
Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Austin, this is, all right, so this bid is just for the gates?
They are expensive, yes, sir. This is the gates and the installation of the gates.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, as I said, and then the rest of the, the rest of the project that we've been working on will come to us when though, but you said it's coming soon.
It's coming soon, we have it out to bid shortly. It's, should be in a couple of weeks, yes, sir.
I just, a point of clarification for me. The part of the previous item is coming from the same fund as this item? Is that correct?
This is, uh, this is coming from the Capital Project Fund. Yes, there were, well.
Part of, part of it was coming from the Capital Project Fund? Yes, sir.
All right, so I guess, why didn't we take all of it from Capital Fund budget? For most of it?
Well.
And then it, then, why didn't it trickle down to the next item?
Well, this particular project was a C I, was a capital improvements project in last year's budget at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So this, this particular gateway, or this tide gate replacement was a project that was in the budget.
Okay, and the other one was not?
The, the other one, the other one's in the budget is a capital fund, but we, we typically budget a certain amount of money for L-MIG, and then we get, to match the money that the state gives us, they give us about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We match it with three hundred and some, and then we always kind of try and get a few more roads just to see if the price is, 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 is going to be favorable. We were hoping the price would be a little bit more favorable. The, the asphalt prices are going down, but they lag a little bit behind gasoline prices.
So instead of doing a few less roads, we tap the fund fund balance and pay for it? That was kind of my point with the question, I thought it was damn funny. Is this the lowest bid on item thirty-nine, the one eighty-one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, would you give us a little better idea exactly where, where we're talking about here?
This is right at the golf course there, the Sea Island Golf Course. As you take a, if you're right there at the corner of King's Way and Federica, and you take, instead of going towards the village and you go down towards the golf course, and then you head towards the, instead of going through the, you know, where all the oak trees are, all the majestic oak trees, you take your, your right that goes back there to where the equipment shed is, usually engineering stuffs are, are back in the equipment shed area. There's a, there's a, a wall back there, a, that these two gates are, these two metal flap gates currently, the head wall there.
Commissioners, this is phase one to clear out King's Terrace and all the flooding that you've gotten emails about for the last three years. Mr. May in particular, I know you've gotten several emails from her. That whole basin there drains from the King's Terrace subdivision next to the airport and then goes out through the Sea Island ditches. But if we don't stop the salt water from coming back in, it's kind of hard to get it to go back out. So this is phase one, and then they have, have budgeted for in last year's budget and will, I guess, finish up the rest of it to get the rest of that area to where it's, it's draining more properly. I think there's a, there'll be a pump that's involved, similar to what they had to do on Federica Road next to those condos. So this is a very well, this is a very needed project. I'm glad that the bids came in cheaper than what we had anticipated, but that subdivision is really hurting when it, when it floods.
Any other discussion, Commissioners? Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to award the contract to Dogwood Construction Company.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all those in favor, signal, I'm sorry, any other discussion? All those in favor, signal vibration, raise your right hand? Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Thirty-nine, consider adoption of a resolution discr- disclaiming any interest in a fifty-foot road, proposed park and playground, and Lot thirteen reserved for park or street depicted on the plat of Peterson subdivision, Sam Harris Track, drawer number seven, number two forty-one, dated May first, nineteen forty, recorded in the office of the Clerk of Superior Court, Glen County, Georgia, and authorized the chairman to execute an associated disclaimer of interest in property which is on or about Plum Brook Road, St. Simons Island, Georgia. Mr. Hanley, go ahead.
Mr.?
Plum Brook, Plum Brook. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, it may be aptly named because the county never spent a dime on the road, and that's part of why we don't want to claim any interest in it. There is a plat recorded, as I alluded to, it has a number of lots that are in common ownership that are not depicted on here. It also has a park down at the lower end, doesn't conform to county geometrics or anything like that. We have never maintained it, we never expressed an interest in doing any development on it. And this is the means by which we disclaim any rights and or claim to it. And you have some title opinion and recommendations on, on resolutions from the county attorney and supported by a, an outside counsel.
So we're kind of abandoning it?
Kind of sort of, or disclaiming, you're disclaiming any knowledge of it to go back to a TV show?
Oh, well, I understand.
I don't think, yeah, we never, we never actually claimed it or did it, the county ever dealing with it.
Yeah.
And if, if we do, if we were to claim it, then we might be responsible for having to build a road there.
Yes.
So by never claiming it, which we have no title to it, it will be up to the developer to build his own road. Two county specs with the appropriate drainage.
Any other questions for Mr. Hanley? Commissioners?
Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution disclaiming any interest in that road.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal vibration, raise your right hand?
Thank you.
That's unanimous. Mr. County Attorney, anything for executive session? Nothing for executive session, no other business? Meeting's adjourned.